The Columbia County Board of Commissioners meeting to order on Tuesday, October the 20th, 6:00 PM. I'm going to ask Commissioner Malier to open us with the invocation unless her daughter would prefer to stand and do it.
(laughing) Thanks.
I had to do that.
Thank you. Y'all please bow your head with me. Lord, thank you so much for this beautiful fall day and thank you for the blessings we have, including the right to assemble and to govern ourselves. Help us today as we make decisions that affect our neighbors and those folks that are, that live around us, the citizens of this county. Some of these decisions may not be easy, but please guide us to be sure our actions are based in fairness and in truth. In your name we pray, amen.
Please stand for the pledge.
(inaudible).
Let the record show, we have a full quorum of commissioners. Commissioners, you also have two sets of minutes in your packets, one from October 6, 2020, as well as the October 6th executive session meeting. So if they meet with your approval, I'll accept one motion to approve them both.
No moves, sir.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Well, I'm going to jump straight down to special recognition, and I know that we have somebody with Columbia County Youth Leadership here tonight. Why don't you just stand and tell us your name and what school you go to?
(inaudible).
Welcome, ladies. We also have a proclamation. Well, let me back up just for a second. I know that there's been a couple of folks who want to speak. We'll let you speak when we get to the issue that concerns you. So when we get to that, I'll call you up. And just want to welcome everyone here. We do have a declaration that I believe Commissioner Galias is going to give.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman.
Is there Ms. Kim Kane here?
This is, uh, happens to be my district.
Hello, ma'am. Whereas the ancestors of today's southeastern tribes, the Lower Muskogee Creek, the Chickasaw, Shawnee, Uche, and the Kioki have for millennia inhabited the lands of the present-day Columbia County, Georgia, honoring, protecting, and stewarding this beautiful land that we hold so dear. And whereas Coeeta Town, capital of the Lower Muskogee Creek Tribe, intimately connected with the native tribes living in what would become Columbia County, Georgia. In 1739, General James Oglethorpe visited Coeeta Town and signed the Treaty of Coeeta, cementing the most important document for peace and friendship with all Native Americans and the colonists in Georgia. And whereas Native American Awareness Week began in 1976 and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in August 1990, designating the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month. And whereas the first Native American joint resolution, Lower Muskogee Tribe and the Cherokee Nation, was passed in the 2019-2020 regular session in the Georgia General Assembly. And whereas the governor of the great state of Georgia, Brian Kemp, has proclaimed the month of November as American Indian Heritage Month, when numerous cultural, artistic, and historical activities will take place across the state of Georgia. Now therefore, we do proclaim November as American Indian Heritage Month in Columbia County, Georgia. Kemp, do you have anything to say?
I'm here as a representative of Peregrine International on behalf of Daphne Swilling, who for the last 20 years, she's worked with governments across our nation and in Scotland and Ireland, England, to bring healing and reconciliation with the indigenous people of the land, the First Nations people. So she has been working with the state of Georgia the last five years at the State House for Georgia to honor and recognize the contribution that the Native Americans have made in our state and to bring healing for the injustices that Georgia inflicted upon the Native Americans. Georgia and Native America, especially the Cherokee Nation, is known as the crown jewel of America. And so we carry a lot of weight in Native America, and it's just time for healing of a people group. Each people group, every tongue, tribe, and nation has a specific purpose. And the state of Georgia was founded on a friendly relationship, as you heard Commissioner Galias share, with Oglethorpe befriended Tomachichi. He was a creek chief in Savannah, and he took the time to build a relationship, and Tomachichi gifted him the land to start the colony there in Savannah, Georgia. He didn't go and take the land. So Georgia's one of the few states that has a covenant relationship with the Native American Indians and was founded in covenant relationship. And so we've recently, our State House on June 26th, the last day of session, it was a joint approval, a resolution 1645. Georgia honored the Lower Muskogee Creek and the Cherokee Nation for their contribution to our state, and they also shared some of the injustices. So it's Georgia's hour for healing and reconciliation for a people group. There may be some of you here that have Native American in your bloodlines. My husband has some Cherokee in him. But it's just time that they're honored and how fitting that it's, we're fixing to celebrate November the 11th, is the 400th year of the Mayflower Compact. Those pilgrims would not have survived that first hard winter in 1620 had it not have been for the Native Americans that were there, that fed them, taught them how to fish, feed themselves, and shelter. So I just want to thank our commissioners and for Columbia County honoring the First Nations people of our land. And we do have a rich heritage here in Columbia County. You know, we have Koke Creek, Koke Baptist Church, they were a Kioki tribe. We have the Uche Indians, Uche Creek named after them, and some of our municipal buildings with Uche in it. And so I just want to thank y'all and honor you for proclaiming Columbia County as Native American Heritage Month.
Thank you very much. Only when I present, money attached, but not tonight. Okay. Like, you do, you do, you do have to endure pictures. Cassidy around somewhere? Yeah.
Commissioners, you have the consent agenda in front of you. All the items on this agenda have been through committee and received the necessary votes to be placed on this agenda for one vote. So if they still, if it still meets with your approval, and these items do, then I'll accept one motion to approve them all.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. On to the debate agenda. And this, as we have unfinished business, it was postponed from September 15th. Mr. Allen, do you want to address this? Do you want to make a motion? You want the person to come up and speak?
Uh, I believe the applicant came into the room. I think I saw Mr. Price. There, there he is. Mr. Price, would you come forward and give your name and address, please, sir?
Good evening. My name is Philip Price. Address is 111 Spring Lake Port, North Augusta. For a couple more weeks. Coming back on.
He is becoming a resident. Um, so Mr. Price, you, you, we've been working on this for over a month now, um, this application. You did submit a plan earlier in the day, and I think that all the commissioners have had a chance to look at it. I know, were there two? Was there one earlier version this morning, like say noon, and then one at four?
There was.
I think everybody's seen the four o'clock.
Second one was the most, obviously the most recent. Wasn't a lot of changes, just added a few details. As far as the work in progress plan that I'd worked with Mr. Williams.
And that, and that had some landscaping. I wanted you here just to answer some questions because I had some questions asked of me that I didn't necessarily have the correct answer to. On the, you have that? I did send it to commissioners. Patrice, do you have a copy of that? I'm sorry, I'm looking at, yeah, Ms. Crowley says. Can you put it on, or? Um. Yeah.
Okay.
Basically, you do state that all shrubs are inside the fence. I had some, they were asking me the questions about the design itself. I imagine it's not exactly to scale. That first line is curb, and then there's a small gap. Second line is the fence that kind of curves around at the entranceways, and then there's a third line back behind it. Any idea what that?
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go. You can actually draw on that screen.
Okay. The furthest right, furthest line to the right, obviously it's not to scale.
Yeah, but just tell us what it is.
Basically, after talking with Mr. Williams, landscape architect for the county, that would be, he recommended 30 inches inside of the fence as far as the spacing be adequate for those. So my marks inside of that block obviously are not the correct size, but just kind of a layout temporarily as a work in progress to know that that's a 30-inch bed there.
Okay, that's, if that's, yeah, they were just asking me, and I wasn't sure what all those individual lines were. I just wanted to be clear.
I didn't draw my Xs large enough.
It's okay. All right, I just wanted to be clear. And this is just the landscape, shrubbery and the greenery. Were, was there any other, were there any other adjustments you had in mind? I know we discussed adjusting the fence that you had, whether it was, it was removing the top layer, replacing, you know, there were options on replacing the chain length and things like that, but I understand you don't necessarily want to make those changes.
Not necessarily. They were, they were fairly costly to do, cost prohibitive. Obviously, and what I, the end goal that I'm trying to accomplish is, we were looking at somewhere $30,000, $35,000 to complete it as far as the structure in the back, which is why the variance was requested. When we got into looking at estimates for changing the fence, replacing the chain length, all the different possibilities there, it started hitting at $10,000, $30,000, $50,000, and it just increased in the exponential. Doesn't make a lot of sense for, I'm going to put up a structure in the back and spend $30,000 or $32,000. Have to spend another $100,000 on, total of $100,000 to get, you know, the building in the back that's going to benefit us the most. It's kind of a tough pill to swallow.
Having the fence and all, nobody, I know of, nobody else now watching the road has a fence.
Right. So in, in the past, we've had issues with people jumping the fence, cutting holes in the fence, those type things, because the units have TVs and other stereos and appliances inside of them. With the big concern, one of the, one of the comments that was brought to me was, you know, if we adjust the fence to open up, or remove the fence to open up the lot, you know, we expose a very high dollar volume of inventory to a lot, the potential of a lot of vandalism. Somebody breaks in one of the units and it takes simply just them going to the restroom inside of it, becomes a used piece. And we look at what that does to the margin, because if I've got two of them, I can't sell the one that's new anymore. I've still got the same amount of dollars invested in it, but I'm having to sell it for cost, we're losing money. That's obviously not the point.
I know each person runs their business the way they want to run it. They have a fence over.
Yes, sir.
Cover the name?
I do. That, that was actually brought to me as an example.
You mean his?
Camper land?
His competitor, the one on, on?
About Gander.
Yeah, Gander.
They have a fence, everything they have is fenced, except for their parking lot.
All the units are behind?
Yes, sir. They actually have multiple layers of fence, if I remember what I saw correctly. Whereas they separate their stuff out. All of ours is within one fence, our customer units, plus the inventory.
Other questions about the design you have in front of you?
Yeah, but the biggest challenge we're faced with is we're trying to revitalize Martinez and leaving it the way it is, not doing any justice to revitalization. So that's the challenge you feel on our end.
Yes, sir.
New comes in. I know they're starting from scratch, but they're having to do everything that the code requests or asks, and all in it's, that fair that they have to go to all extent and people do things they don't have to, probably anything up.
Well, I'm not requesting not to bring anything up the code, and I don't think fair is an adequate term. Let's use equitable. You know, we've been in business on that same piece of dirt for going on 53. That's a lot of history, that's a long time. I get that. We've tried to make sure that we maintain the appearance, the lots clean, the building looks nice. There's things that we do, obviously because we sell a high-end product, try to maintain that. I have no intentions whatsoever in trying to let things run down or become overgrown or anything like that. Trying to comply and be, we've been a staple in the community for a long time, not out to ruffle any feathers or start anything, obviously, other than it's moving in the right direction. Also don't feel like that we're going to be a part of the solution. Don't feel like all the burden should fall on our shoulders just to start.
Actually, I, we did actually speak a little bit earlier. We were talking about the revitalization that we actually have invested in, that we've begun on Washington Road. If, if, if Mr. Johnson could speak to that real quick about what, what we have been doing on Washington Road, that we've already begun revitalizing.
Yes, sir. So with some of the businesses on Washington Road already starting to put extra, extra effort into their landscape, we saw that at the county line with the, with the car dealership there. Jim Hudson Lexus did a really good job of landscaping that. That was inspirational for us. So actually, what we've gone in and done now is we have gone in and edged all of the grass areas that are, that are in the right of way. We have overseeded all of those, we aerated all those, we are now actively watering all of those, and the ryegrass is now starting to come up. So what we're going to see is, is a really pretty green stand of grass all the way from the county line all the way to Columbia Road. And it's really just our first step at trying to just beautify. We also have a plan in place. We're working with a landscape architect now. There are some places where the right of way is a little wider, so we are going to go in and the county is going to invest in putting some bushes, shrubbery, things that may be off the road a little bit that are aesthetically pleasing. But just to try to beautify that corridor a little bit, we feel like it's going to benefit the businesses in the long run, you know, to, to make it look better. So we're actively doing that. And then last but not least, as you know, we are actively considering a tax allocation district that could involve that area. And if that tax allocation district goes into place, then you'll see significant investment going back into the beautification in the, not only the landscape, but the buildings and the design standards and all those things would change. So it's an opportunity of trying to reinvest. I think this board's been pretty, pretty clear about your intent to beautify that corridor, and staff has been working on that.
How does the state right of way go? Do you?
Wide, Matt?
Wide, does it?
It depends, well, it depends. I guess it's from the center line, so.
It varies, it definitely varies. So in some areas, we have maybe seven, eight foot from the back of curb, so about a one-foot, 18-inch planting strip, five-foot sidewalk, and then another foot or two. It just varies. It's hard for me to say all the way down.
And we're going to maintain that. Historically, the, a lot of the business owners have maintained that, but some do and some don't. So instead of giving them that opportunity, we're actually going to have county workers going through there and maintaining that on a pretty regular basis. If it's one guy pushing a lawnmower from Columbia Road to the county line, that's exactly what we'll do.
Mr. Richardson, to answer your question, in front of our property, it's a 100-foot right of way. So our fence line is basically, based on the plats that I have from all the way back when Washington Road was two lanes, the fence is basically sitting on the right of way. So that's why we keep it outside of the road.
So with this landscape plan that you have, is that going to irrigate it, or does it need plants to live, or?
Most likely, yes, sir. We would, we would obviously, you know, intent's not to invest the money for them to die.
Sure, absolutely.
You know, because then we've accomplished nothing except pocketbook. So, you know, there would, there would be some, probably some sort of drip system or something that would be individualized to them.
So staff's cleared. There, actually, you're not talking about planting that area there, you're actually talking about planting?
Inside.
Behind that fence.
Right. And where your circle is, is still, based on 100-foot right of way, that circle is still in the right of way.
Right. And this will be the area that we're talking about maintaining. That's exactly what we're talking about doing all the way down on both sides of Washington Road.
We also maintain that as well.
Yeah, you guys have done a good job of doing that.
Times that the county's there.
Are there any upgrades that you're planning on doing to the fence, or is the fence going to stay the same? I've heard different, you know, conversations. Their fence or barbed wire, all, you know, all kinds of different conversation.
I mean, obviously, there, there's a lot of different opportunities to do things out there, and that's what I was alluding to earlier, is that when we start changing things, obviously, cost increases. Usually, applies that fence has been there a while. It does, maybe not as much as a brand-new vinyl one, but it does disappear, looking at it. It does protect our investment and the investment of our current and future customers as well. As far as changing the fence, that's, if that's a possibility not to have to do that, then obviously, this is not to have to change.
What about removing the barbed wire? Would that be a no-go for you, or at least from the front? I mean, you spoke of some, some security issues you had.
If what we're talking about is just on the Washington Road frontage, I mean, that's certainly something that I can entertain. As far as the sides, we do have a couple of, a couple of other businesses that are on some of the sides of our, our property that they allow some things to go on that invites certain type of activities that we don't necessarily want to be a part of, that could contribute to issues within our, our fence. So I very much would prefer barbed wire to stay up on the sides in the rear.
So we're talking about just removing it from just the frontage, or maybe the frontage and 10 feet back on each side or whatever, that, obviously, that, the goal is not to have the appearance of it as folks are entering Columbia County driving down Washington Road. That's, that's the goal, is, is, is not to immediately see barbed wire or razor wire and think, well, there's a problem here. That's, that's the concern and the, and the image that we don't. I, I understand that reality is you do have, you have some folks right next to you, and I've been to your property with you and I've seen them, that do cause you some concern. But you don't think it's coming from Washington Road necessarily? I mean, the busyness of the, of the highway is keeping, keeping mischievous, mischievous to a minimum, I guess, there.
What if we just replace, just replace the fence with something that's a little more appealing? Just the front part, Washington Road part, faces Washington Road, just that stretch?
That stretch is roughly 460 some odd feet of frontage. With the gates that are there, two gates and that road frontage, just to replace the chain link, and they don't even make those gates anymore, so we have to replace the gates for in the upper 20s.
Yeah, I think just the fence, you're probably about $12,000 or $15,000, and then the gates on top of that.
So it's a pretty substantial.
An option.
It is an option. We discussed having the vinyl coated chain link, black or green or something that, that might blend a little easier. I'm, I'm open to any suggestions from the board before I make a motion.
Can we, can we have the aerial back that we just had, please? Yes, that one. Sir, you can draw on this. Can you, can you draw on us where the pole building's going to be, where you plan it to be? Okay, so this is the same orientation?
Yes.
Okay.
Who is important in spending any money, but how important do you feel this addition to your business?
Well, we built our business on customer service, trying to provide the very best customer experience that we possibly can. Obviously, I feel like we've been pretty successful through three generations and 52. One of the things that we, we pride ourselves on is the care that we take when a customer does purchase from us, put them through a class, we spend a couple hours answering questions and teaching them how to do it so they, they utilize their investment. The intent with, of this structure is to protect that while they're going through the class, to give them the opportunity, when it's 105 degrees on the asphalt in August, to be able to do it in the shade. Or when it's 45 degrees outside in January and it's pouring down rain, it keeps them dry. You know, so it gives us an opportunity to enhance that customer experience, as well as it increases the safety of our employees that are able to, to work on them in the environment as well.
Have you been doing that inside of one of these other buildings in the past?
We, on the rare occasion that it was hurricane or something like that, we've moved them into the shop. But in order to do that, we're, we're moving something we're working on, and so we're losing labor time in the facility to be able to do the class. We just saw this as an opportunity to customer experience.
Yes?
Patrice, can we have the aerial back on the screen?
The other one?
Yeah, that's fine.
Granddad?
That's my uncle.
Own pieces of property where it's not on two pieces?
Yeah, so we, at this point, the discussion has been, you know, we can do a quick clean to deed that to the other piece of property, which he also owns as well, just so that we're not crossing property lines. You know, that's an expense, but obviously a minimal expense for our attorney to do that. So that, in my opinion, that's a non-issue. We can get that taken care of internally.
I was, I just, I just wanted to clarify in the big picture, because we're focusing on the details of the fence and, and that thing. In the big picture, can we cover it one more time? Why are we having this conversation? Because there's a request for a major variance, correct?
Well, it's a, it.
It's a rezoning.
A rezoning.
Rezoning, that's one.
And once you rezone, you got to bring the entire property up to?
Code.
Code.
Our code changed.
Four years.
Several years back.
Two years ago?
Four years ago, 2016.
Four years ago.
Yeah, 16, 2016.
C2 that allowed this, now his business falls under C3. Triggers are all.
So this isn't just out of the blue, hey, we just walked up and said, hey, you need, you need a new fence. This is, this is a...
Well, it was somewhat out of the blue. I mean, to me it was, because we knew nothing of the Martinez activity and all those things. None of us remember being notified of that or made aware that that was happening, and then when I applied for the, actually what started all of it, when I got with the contractor and he came to apply for the building permit, he was told absolutely not. So he came back to me and he says, okay, this is what we got to work out. And so as we dug into it, filled out the application and going through the process is how we've learned all these different hoops that we're expected to jump through.
Did a variance for years ago?
We leased.
We leased the property.
Under this new code.
Okay. Well, we don't own that piece of property. We leased that piece of property from Darryl James, owns it. We lease it as a storage lot. All I had to do with that was, Darryl called me and said, hey, if you see the signs, this is what it's about. It was, that didn't involve us at all, other than we just...
We had to do something for Darryl, and I can't remember what it was.
He forgot to pay his tax bill, and so it had to be rezoned.
Under new, new, new code, and everything that, whatever, we dealt with it under the new code. It wasn't...
Right, but that, that time didn't involve...
Okay.
So, if, if we do a rezoning, and the whole property has to be brought up to code, would this fence issue that we're talking about, would that take care of? Would you be one-hundred percent up to code?
What, if you remove the fence?
Removed it, fixed it?
Oh, no. I mean, we're...
There are a hundred things on the list, and we're just taking on one?
No, no, there's, I mean, I, I could let Scott or, or Matt deal. There's, there's an awful lot there. Under normal circumstances now, we would have setbacks and all. I mean, if it were a ground-up, there would be a, a...
So, here's the list that staff brought me. I'm afraid to show it to you, because it's probably half a million dollars, seven-hundred thousand dollars worth of stuff that I would be required to do.
So, it got whittled down to just one item?
We, we were able...
That's what we're talking about.
Yeah. It got down to just what can we do? We've, we've literally been in a totally gray area for the last month, just trying to find some intermediate ground that would not be too taxing to him as the applicant, and would still at least move us in the direction we wanted to go. Yeah, in, in the direction of the activity center that, and, and the momentum that we're trying to build.
So, if we said no today, there would be no changes to the fence? The fence would stay exactly what it is?
Anything? He operate like he's operating today, no questions asked?
Hope we go along with...
He couldn't build the, the thing.
Wouldn't be able to, the pole barn, but the fence would stay the same.
He wouldn't have to change any. He would not have to change anything.
But if we negotiated something, at least the fence would be a little bit better. But it still wouldn't be a hundred percent up to code?
Not according to what staff tells me.
There's, there's, there's almost, almost no way to bring him a hundred percent to code. It would be a complete, complete facelift and reimagination of his property.
Was it up to code a one-hundred percent when you were C-two? Or that right?
Code has changed so many times over the fifty-two years.
Yeah, on which day?
I mean, that's, that's, yeah, I mean, that, the circumstances of this applicant finds ourselves with a site that has honestly evolved through multiple county ordinances. And it continued to be grandfathered in, and grandfathered in, and grandfathered in, until we, we now sit here where we are with multiple parcels, all of them one, one applicant's domain, that's very out of code, but has survived, because it's, it's been grandfathered in through all of the evolutions of that code. I mean, at, at some point...
Last time it was required any code changes or anything was when we purchased the old Martinis Fire Department that was on that corner. I think that was, oh, it's been grandfathered continually.
I mean, even the right-of-way has changed in the fifty years they've been there. What we consider right-of-way, what we consider, I mean, everything has changed to make it very, um, so, I mean, the, the problem we find ourselves in, and, and, and this is what I've, I've been, you know, trying to work Mr. Price on, is trying to be as fair and equitable as possible to a, a valued member of the community that's been a business for over fifty years, that's paid its taxes, and always been a, 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 a good citizen with the vision of, of, of moving the county forward and trying to do our very best to, to beautify that corridor. It's, it's been a very, very difficult situation, compounded by the fact that this is only one business. If we continue with these efforts, we'll find ourselves here again, and again, and again, and again, as older businesses on that corridor either choose to upgrade, or, or look to change, or whatever. And, you know, the, the question why, why him? He happens to be the lucky guy that's first to do it under these circumstances. But if we don't ask for something from him, then how do we hold anybody down the line to any accountability in that same, same venue? So, it, it is not an easy, uh, not an easy issue, something that I've been working with. In, in addition, so, so I will ask, in addition, Philip, to your, the, the landscape, the shrubberies, and the, the plannings that you put forth in your proposed, um, plan you sent this afternoon, can we do something with the fence? At least remove the razor or the, the...
Barbed wire.
Barbed wire, thank you, from the frontage. And go back one, Patrice, to the overhead again, please. There we go. And so, if we try to imagine the lots on either side of you, these long buildings, you've got, what is that, uh, to the right, there's a building that, that, that is, looks like maybe three campers away from the right-of-way, and to the left, another four or five. Could we possibly pull it back that far on the sides, just to limit visibility of it, uh, where it was, you know, where the, the neighboring buildings would be blinding the existing, um, barbed wire? Would that be something that'd be acceptable to you? Just enough on the sides where, you know, like I said, to, back to where the, the neighboring buildings would help blind some of that?
Well, thank you, Chairman Duncan, for correcting that it's barbed wire, not razor wire.
Yeah, well, actually, I...
It's my fault. I call it razor wire.
I was gonna say, he called it razor wire earlier, which is what stuck with me. I, I knew it was barbed wire.
The, look at, if you look at the, the aerial, northwest corner there, uh, where that corner is, there is a rather large sign that blocks that corner. So, you don't see the corner of our lot there. On the other side of it, the, the concern that I have, one, because of the age of the post, the type of fence post that it takes to support that end wire, um, that's something that has to be evaluated by factors that I've been dealing with. Feasible option, what we're looking at.
To remove it?
Far as, because you've gotta have a stop point somewhere.
Right.
Means that that post has to be strong enough to hold pressure. Intermediate posts are not the ones that hold the pressure, they just support the weight.
The corner posts.
The corner that, that holds the pressure.
Okay.
And I'm, hey, if we remove it off the front, I can only speak for me, that works for me. I'm still hung up on replacing the front fence. But to me, that makes, if we replaced the front, front part of the fence, and it was four-hundred and some feet, then at least, then you have the, the clean facade.
I, I guess what I'm thinking is, even if we replace everything on the front, frontage side, got regular chain link and barbed wire right on the corner, what really has that accomplished? It's still...
Better than a sharp stick. Trying to find a middle ground.
And, and, and as am I. Again, I, it's, it's, it's my motion to make any, and, and any other comments before, before I do so. Any other thoughts from experienced builders on the board, or other business owners?
Well, I know I've, I've all having to spend money and invest money on, on, on updoing different businesses of mine. Two that I've built, they, I overboard on landscape all with the parents of the building, well worth money spent. That's where I'm going as a investment is well worth it. I think we get caught up in sometimes, don't wanna spend the money, but once you spend it, you say, doggone, I wish I'd have done that ten years ago. So, that, that's just a personal experience for me. Price is right now, business of mine in North Augusta, taking the whole facade off the round, whole building, stuck on the whole building. Uh, that's just how I'm viewing it. Speak for his.
Anyone else?
So, if we concentrate on just the front right here, just that front fence, the rest of the things on the list that would bring him up to code, they're just forgiven, forgotten, never to be...
The recommendation from planning wiped it clean.
They fixed the front, front fence right there.
So, at this point, anything we do is adding it back in.
So, staff based it on the code, which is what staff's gonna do. We based our recommendation on the code. Planning Commission decided to erase all the things and say they could just have a complete, clean slate and not follow any of those things in the code. So, now you can implement any of those things that were originally posted, or you could say none, or add the ones you want to add now.
Think between...
Anywhere, anywhere in between, you could absolutely do that. So, if you just wanted to focus on the front at this point, that'd be the only conditions that you put on it, you could do that. But the staff's always gonna make the recommendation based on the code.
So, there's a, a few ways that this can move forward here. I, I can make a motion to approve or deny. If I make a motion to approve, I can put conditions on it. I can make a motion with conditions that I want, that you guys may not agree with. You can vote it down and make a substitute motion. To save that time, I am asking all of you to give me any ideas or conditions that you would like in the motion, so that way I can make that motion.
Start with what you think the condition should be.
If I were to make a motion to approve, which I'm, I'm of a mind to do, um, I would accept the thirty-inch bed per plan that he, that, um, Mr. Price submitted earlier today. And, uh, I would ask for removal of the barbed wire across the front, across the Washington Road side of, um, of the property, of the fence. That would be the conditions I would place. I would ask you to look into and consider the aesthetics of the barbed wire on the side, if there were any way to alleviate the appearance, again, for anyone going up and down Washington, just for the sake of the appearance. That's a request. That's not, that would not be one of my, uh, requirements. But I, I would ask you to, to at least consider that.
Are there any dress-up items that your fencing contractor could offer you on the barbed wire that we're concerned with on the sides?
When you say dress-up, what are you, what are you referring to?
Well, that's a, that's an eight-foot fence, I'm assuming with the barbed wire.
No, I think it's, it's...
Well, with the, with the, with the wire on top.
Mm-hmm. Any kind of screening material that they can offer you?
Uh, I mean, they, they do all offer screening material. The, the hesitancy of that is, obviously, we want people to see the inventory.
Yeah, I mean, I'd prefer not, I mean, we're, we're spending a lot of money to beautify the lane. I'd prefer it not look like Attica, you know?
Sure.
But it's not razor wire. Full disclosure.
And you can, you can touch six days a week from nine to six.
So, that, that is where I stand in again.
That can be painted, or something to do, bed, or would it stick? Have any idea?
From, from my understanding, some of the conversations that I've had, uh, when we discussed the, the front fence, there, there is a paint material that they utilized to paint the existing poles. They didn't have to, you know, if we were to replace the front, so that didn't have to come up. Um, what I, what I'm told, and I don't know what it costs, I've just, quite expensive to do. Do the entire fence, I don't know, because of the way chain link is put together and made, I don't know that you're gonna coverage without it rubbing off in three, four years from various things.
I think he's right.
We, and that, we explored that as a possibility, that unlike it's viable.
Planning's on the outside to cover the fence.
It's not, that's not an option. No, because that's right-of-way. His fence is on his property line. And even if it didn't interfere with the, uh, operation of his business, and he could give up that, that space to move the fence, his light posts would be outside fence line. His light posts are right up against the fence. It is a conundrum. So, once again...
Was right on the right-of-way. We can potty plant that right-of-way, um, flowers or whatever. I mean, that would change the whole appearance. That, that...
So, if me and Gary went out there with some shovels and planted some stuff?
You could do so, and when DOT saw it, they would knock on your door and ask you to file, fill out an application for an encroachment permit, make you go through all their process. We did that with a stop sign. We literally replaced a stop sign and have to go through this process, which you all be hearing in a couple of weeks. So, uh, we're actually going through the process right now for Washington Road. We're, um, the landscaped areas that Mr. Johnson was telling you about, we will have to ask DOT for permission to add shrubs. Now, grass, grass is grass. We can cut grass all day. But if we're gonna plant a planting material on that site, they're gonna wanna see site distance. They wanna make sure that the plants not blocking sight view of his, his customers as they're leaving his parking lot, not interfering with the sight distance of a sign. So, they're, they're gonna look at a lot of issues. They're gonna look at where the sprinkler system is located, is it throwing water onto the sidewalk? Is it causing slip hazards in the wintertime? Is it impacting the road? There's a lot they look at. It's not just a wave of magic wand, you get to go work on DOT property.
I'm sure that's a rapid process.
Absolutely. And I would like to point out one thing. Staff would, would recommend that if you do vote to approve this, that you're not waiving all non-conformities. If they wanna come back in the future and do another thing, that, that you get to hear it again, that you're not just blanketly saying, we're approving everything you've ever done in the past, you, you have a clean slate from here on out. You're just simply saying, can have your zoning with this condition. However, if he wants to tear down his building and build a new one next week, he's gonna have to come back in front of you at that point.
Still non-conforming.
Bring everything into conformity. We just don't want him to...
Just, just make sure I get the wording right when the time comes.
Will help.
Again, those are, those are my conditions. Any, any additional conditions recommended that I can add to the motion, rather than have the motion adjusted once it's made. Anyone else got anything?
You will have the conditions that are, that have been lined up, at a minimum? Those are back in?
His thirty-inch plannings inside the fence that he submitted in the plan.
Okay.
And the removal of the barbed wire from the Washington Road side of the property. Had questions about the fence earlier.
I'd rather have the fence replaced, but...
Have you had a price on that, Phil?
Yes, sir, yes.
On placing that, and maybe with the black coated or whatever?
We have, and, and that goes back to just the chain link. Constantly, that's all I go to, that just chain link by itself is over ten, because of the two gates that we put it, if I remember right, I think it's twenty-eight. That's not removing the building, that's taking the chain link, poles, doing the gates, and then across the front.
Anything, Mr. Miller? Need to ponder some. It's, it's a struggle. It has been a struggle.
This, this is a real, a real struggle for me. Really is, because I get it, not wanting to spend the money and all, but we have constantly reached, I have, I won't say we, I have. What can we do to Martinis? What can we do to Martinis? What can we do to Martinis? Not fair for me to get on these guys expecting Martinis to change. We don't help when it comes time to change.
And I understand that.
We'll never get there.
Also, we got to crawl before you can walk.
All in Columbia County are trying.
We've been crawling an awful long time, Mr. Price. I mean, the, the, the way that our community has been, been growing and progressing and at, at a, at such an accelerated rate, our gateways are the, the first thing people see when they come in. So, that's where we need to, we, we have dedicated and, and decided to really focus on, on making the biggest difference. That, that, that has been an issue. And, and this is, this, again, this is a struggle. Uh, but any other, uh, input from the other commissioners? All right. Being the case, then, I will make a motion. Being the case, then, I will make a motion. I would like to make a motion to approve the request for rezoning from C2 to S1 for RV sales and services located at tax map 078D 039, 039A, 040, 041, 042, and 043, subject to the conditions enumerated in the August 20th, 2020 Planning Commission report with the added conditions of the 30-foot planting bed as submitted by the applicant on October 20th, 2020, and the removal of barbed wire from the fence.
Facing Washington.
Facing Washington Road.
30-inch.
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 I'm sorry, 30-inch. Did I say 30 feet, 30-inch?
Connecting with the Augusta National.
Yeah, we'll get that right.
Those 30-foot trees you want.
That would look really nice.
It would. Out of somebody's pocket.
30-inch bed per the plan submitted, and removal of the barbed wire from frontage fencing on Washington Road. Motion.
One second.
Could there be any more, Matt, you wanna say something?
Yeah, there's clarification on the additional conditions that we need to make sure. You may want to amend your motion to, you're doing this S1 zoning with the conditions that you put in place, but that does not relieve the applicant from, it, from not, from, it's not gonna, he's not gonna be grandfathered in.
I felt by not mentioning that, that it was including.
Thank you, I think you have to make that.
All right. I have to make, if I have to make it clear that this in no way, I'll amend that motion, my motion, to say that these conditions or waiving of any conditions per the planning conditions enumerated in the August 20th, 2020 Planning Commission report in no way remove those conditions from any future applications made in regards to this property. Good enough? Our clerk is making a face. Counsel?
I'm thinking.
Help me out here.
You need to make, it'd be just renovations, it'd be any kind of change in ownership. So applications, I mean, they could have, if they did, I think you just need to say that you're not waiving any of the conditions on the property for future changes.
But it does not negate.
Thought I just did.
It does not negate the non-conforming use. I think that's the biggest thing. It's still gonna be non-conforming.
Congratulations, this is probably the longest discussion we've had in my six years.
Thank you for allowing me to be the guinea pig.
Like we said, I mean, this one's a struggle, it really is. Well, I mean, so, so let's make sure then, let's give us one more shot. I make a motion to approve the request for rezoning from C2 to S1 for RV sales and services located at tax map 078D 039, 039A, 040, 041, 042, and 043, subject to the conditions enumerated in the August 20th, 2020 Planning Commission report with the added conditions of a 30-inch flower bed per design by the applicant submitted October 20th, 2020, and the removal of barbed wire from the frontage fence along Washington Road. These conditions are placed on this application for rezoning only, and they do not negate the non-conforming use of the existing property.
Think that'll fly.
What did I miss?
No, I think you got it all in there. We're just, we're looking at five years down the road.
I'm with you, and I want to make sure that we are covered.
Can I, let me ask Mr. Sterling a question. We're doing, we're doing this from a C2 to an S1.
Because of the non-conforming use that it is in C2, so.
So could we not, could we not leave it a C2 and make the motion that we give him the variance?
Variance.
To allow him to build the structure in C2 with the conditions that we want to place on this and not make it an S1?
Which was originally my understanding of what we were going to try to do from the beginning, but it became a rezoning.
My concern is if you're given a whole brand-new zoning, then a lot of these non-conformings, we may have issues with. Stick with what he has and just give a variance.
That he's still stuck with all the non-conforming that he has because he still has his original C2 zoning.
But he has not made a variance request, has he? Is that a problem?
Well, you can do a different zoning than what's requested.
We can fly by turning his rezoning application into a variance request.
Well, you're putting it, essentially changing the zoning to, zoning request into a denial, but with a condition. I mean, I don't want to call it a variance, but let me just say you can do.
Counsel to write a motion?
I think, I second that motion.
Yeah, we'll work on that, and I think we can fix that. And I think you'll be better off for it in the long run, if we do it this way.
I don't think so. Do I need to withdraw, do I need to withdraw the existing motion on the floor? Okay.
So can we come back to this and?
Yeah, you can, Mr. Sterling.
Why don't we move on and then revisit this?
You can, Mr. Sterling.
Table it for.
Five minutes?
Yeah. Table it.
Other issues?
For later down the agenda.
Today, we're dealing with it now. All righty, here we go. New business had a proclamation for the American Indian Heritage Month, and now we need to approve that proclamation, their motion.
Move that we approve? Make a motion to proclaim in November is American Indian Heritage Month in Columbia County, Georgia.
All in favor, raise your right hand. If she's still here, that certificate's good. Next, the planning and zoning, is this one that's gonna be withdrawn?
Yes, my motion is actually to approve the request to have it tabled.
Rock and fire.
I would like to make a motion to approve the request to table RZ 20-10-01 to November 17th, 2020 Board of Commissioners meeting.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Gary's. We have gentlemen that would like to speak on the next issue. Deal about the disapproval from the Planning Commission, Michael Towns. Please come up, state your name and address for the record, and five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Michael Towns, my address is 14 Kingsbury Court, Georgetown, Georgia. And I appreciate having an opportunity to speak. I was actually expecting to speak after Mr. Floyd, but I'll be more than happy to speak before him. I'm here.
Turned in a form, that's why.
I'm sorry?
You turned in a form, that's why.
Yes, well, I'll be happy.
Would you rather reverse?
It's up to you.
Go ahead, then, you're here.
Okay, I'm here. I'm here in support of Mr. Floyd's desire to have his temporary use authorization appealed, which was denied. He's appealing that. I would like to urge the board to grant his appeal so that he can receive that temporary use authorization. The reason I am urging the board to do this is because I believe that his situation falls under the particular special circumstances and undue burden ordinance that's in Section 54. Because of his family situation and because of his particular circumstances, he's trying to get to Utah, and he's saving money. Now, he will acknowledge that he made a mistake by moving into this RV and turning it into his permanent residence without checking the county ordinance. And he acknowledges that he made a mistake on that. But since he was cited for that, he has tried to go through the process openly and transparently in order to get this temporary use authorization. I believe that forcing him to vacate the RV when it's his intention to move to Utah by September at the end of his military contract, forcing him out would really throw a monkey wrench in his plans because right now he's saving up money to move out Utah. With COVID, with the economy, there's no, there's a lot of uncertainty regarding job prospects. He's on his way out of the military, and his purpose in moving into the RV was to save money. And if you granted him the TUA, he would be there until September, at which point, he and his family.
Remember next year?
Yes, sir. At which point, he and his family will be on his way to Utah. The circumstances, he has three children, his wife is pregnant. It's my understanding that she's on bedrest, or that she has, she has some issues. I believe that forcing him to move out of the RV, finding housing that he'll only be in for another 11 months, I really believe that falls under the special circumstances undue burden. I just feel that if you granted his TUA issue, it will be gone by next September, and it would avoid causing a real hardship for him and his plans in getting to Utah. And that's really all I have to say. He'll give you some more details, but I would just urge the board to please consider that.
What do you have, what is your relationship to the situation? Do you own the property?
I do not. He reached out to me. He wanted me to look at his situation and kind of give him moral support. Full disclosure, I am an attorney, but I have not entered into any formal relationship with him as a client. I'm just here, he had a problem, he wanted someone to check his situation. And I said, yes, I'll be happy to look into it, and, you know, just to be a friend to him. And I, in fact, I just met him today, we had been corresponding via email. You know, he's not an attorney, he's not sophisticated with this stuff. And I said, I'd be more than happy to look at it and to see. And there was a timeframe, his appeal was tonight, and so there wasn't a whole lot of time. So that's why I'm here. Thank you very much.
Floyd, you want to speak? Come up, state your name and address for the record. Take no less than five minutes.
My name is Victor Floyd. I currently live at 2369 Pine Ridge Drive in Apppling, Georgia. I have a written paper to help me express my thoughts better. Commissioners, as you know, I am here about a temporary use authorization. I will be as brief as I can while still adequately covering the points I believe you need to. First, the reason I did not present the information to the committee is simply because I was not allowed to present the facts regarding these special circumstances and the undue hardship that would ensue from a denial of the temporary use authorization. If there was a way to address the committee with my concerns prior to their vote, I am unaware of it to this day. The committee meeting was a closed hearing. I attempted to make a presentation when I was allowed, but the committee had already voted by then. One of the committee members suggested I should have spoken earlier, yet I'm sure you can understand how interrupting a closed committee meeting to speak might have been viewed negatively, negatively, if not illegal. He further accused me of requesting TUA simply because I was caught. I do not know if that sentiment was put forward here, but you should know that it's false. Requesting the TUA now simply because I did not know, know there even was a legal concern until September 16th, when this whole thing unfolded. It is not a nefarious plan, but a simple lack of knowledge. Naturally, once I was made aware of the problem, I began to look for solutions. And that is why I'm here before you now, instead of applying for a TUA at some earlier time. Second, the following statement from the report that was used to deny the temporary use authorization is a misunderstanding. Both the applicant and his family could reside in this primary residence, referring to the owners of the property, until the end of the applicant's military contract. The applicant has also verbally indicated his intent to do so if this authorization were disapproved. Although I did offhand mention that I would look to the owners for that purpose, had not discussed that, much less been given permission for such a thing. I was stunned to find out our plans were a problem for anyone and was simply brainstorming. There was no commitment and no plan B. In fact, having looked at that, it is not an option. There is not enough space for our family of five with one on the way and the Mazas. Sherry has Parkinson's and therefore has special considerations. The home is also not childproof, far from it. In the end, a single primary residence would not be possible for them, nor for us. Here, in brief, are the reasons that I was not previously allowed to present to the committee that I ask you to consider in this appeal. First, it would be interest to the owners of the property. Sherry and Robert Mazza have provided a letter that you have with you due to their inability to be here. Their phone numbers are provided if you have any questions for them, and they said that they should be able to answer the phones if you need. Sherry has Parkinson's disease, as I said earlier, and Sherry and Robert are relying on us to help her on her bad days, provide, and also provide some property upkeep as things have slowly fallen in disrepair over the years. And this temporary use authorization and us remaining there aligns directly with the county code 549C2 that shall not be interest to the neighborhood. So us leaving is an unnecessary physical and financial hardship for them. Number two, it would be interest to my family. The financial items include the coronavirus, the physical distancing, numbers of people, et cetera, that has drastically reduced childcare available on base. And we would be required to move farther from where my children need to be today. A mother, my oldest daughter, would lose her pre-K spot. And not to mention my son, there would have to be a mid-move, which is always difficult in the middle of the school year. The drastically reduced savings would impact my ability to transition from the military to civilian career, especially given the civilian job reduction nationwide due to the coronavirus. Our goal was to pay off debt and create enough savings to buy land and build out in Utah. So in short, between housing, childcare, and transportation, a forced move would impact our budget unexpectedly with huge additional expenses for us, totaling on a low point of $1,400 with childcare and housing and everything. And if we had knew on this earlier, it wouldn't be a problem. But I'm facing this now before we had committed to living in the RV. And there's also the physical problems. As mentioned earlier, my wife has pelvic dysplasia, and she needs to be on bedrest as much as possible so that it doesn't get worse per the doctor's instructions. And moving with children to another location doesn't fit in with that. Moving when the time is already strained to find balance between family, church, work, college, and other obligations, will be physically demanding, to say the least, not to mention the increased risk of injury. Naturally, I would try to mitigate that as best as I could, but finding people to help with a move in the middle of the pandemic while physical distancing is required and forced within the military, it's a huge problem. I am certain I cannot do it by myself, and if I do not do it by myself, then I face having to pay someone additionally in order to move. So in summary, this temporary use authorization is a legal and valid mechanism for cases like mine. I'm not asking for something outside the law. I'm looking to you to apply the law in these special circumstances to avoid the undue hardship on myself, my family, and the property owners. Had I known of these legal issues prior to committing to our plans, I would have either applied for the TUA in advance or made other arrangements. The problem is that I didn't know. Neither did my friends. Now, I and my friends are in a bind and need a legal temporary use authorization for the short period from now until September, when I would leave. Thank you.
When did you move into the RV?
I moved in in July of this year.
And if you'd known about the temporary use authorization application, you would have applied for it?
Correct.
And if you'd been told no, what would your plans have been?
I would have not boughten the RV, nor would I have boughten the truck, and we would have continued to live where we were. That was over in High Meadows, in the High Meadows neighborhood. And I would have had to find another way, I probably wouldn't be able to.
You purchased the RV for this intent?
Yes, specifically for this reason.
These, is Code Enforcement here? No, or can you speak for them, Mrs. Sterling? What, do you know what prompted? Do you know what prompted, you're in my district, and I suspect these things go on all over my district, so I'm just always interested in what prompted it, what prompted someone's attention?
My understanding that code enforcement was contacted about a possible violation at this property and sent to investigate, that's what resulted in the enforcement action against the applicant here.
I'm looking at the overhead, there aren't a lot of neighbors there. What was the sanitation, how was the sanitation handled in there? Do you have a, a larger tank outside, or?
We have the RV stationed there, and then we have a small shade with some bushes in the back that should cover it from the neighbors in the back, and it goes from a downhill, so have to be someone coming into the property to really be able to see the RV.
No, but I'm, in terms of sanitation, you're, I, I have an RV, where, where does, where does the waste go?
Oh, we have a tank, and then we take it to the, what do you call it, the sewage disposal.
You take the entire?
Yeah, I, I empty it out in the tank and we get ready every week, take it to.
So you own the RV, which is a good thing, so you can move this RV to a place that allows RVs.
That is another problem, is that we began to remodel it to better suit the coming child, and also to make it more, more, increase insulation and problems underneath it, and so the underneath part, where we're not living right now, is currently torn up. And at the very earliest, to be able to finish getting the materials where we need it, we won't, and my time in order to be able to do it, we won't be able to have that done until end of November, early December, to where it would be movable again, without other people helping or finding-
Having a tow truck to move it.
Yeah.
The real, or a real challenge, oh, I thought he was raising his hand. A real challenge is, I hear your circumstance, but the code is in place really to protect the county from situations where somebody not in your situation put their, put an RV in their, in their friend's backyard, and, and wasn't appropriate. Your circumstance may be a little different, but it, it comes down to exceptions. If we make an exception here, then what precedence do we set that we could have RVs in backyards all over the county? So that, the biggest challenge is not setting a precedence. This is speaking for me. Any questions?
Just the biggest challenge, Mr. Chairman, County Attorney and I were just discussing this. Temporary use would apply if it were his land, which in this case is not his land, and it would also apply if there was a project on the horizon. So that one year is to allow you to potentially build a house on your land and live in that, that other vehicle temporarily while your house is being built. That's the way the code is written. So when we talk about the special circumstances, I'm not sure that a temporary use agreement would even be appropriate in this case, the way the code is written, because it's not his land. If it, if it were, it'd be, it'd be different. But I just wanted to, to make sure that the board was aware of that, because it, again, the staff just make our recommendation based on the code. I understand the, the applicant's hardship, that's certainly something to take into consideration, but strictly based on the code and based on the comments, I want to make sure the board was aware of that, that temporary uses would only apply in those circumstances.
Questions, Mr. Floyd?
Well, with that knowledge, I mean, appropriate mechanism, and what you just said, it's not.
I don't think there is an appropriate mechanism to allow somebody to live in an RV on somebody else's property. I, I don't think.
We do have travel trailer parks, so we do have a zoning for that situation.
Right, but it had to be zoned for that.
Right.
It wouldn't be on a single family or RA zoning.
Right, and so what Mr. Johnson was referring to was in section 54-1, it talks about, it says the planning director shall have the authority to approve a temporary use allowing a mobile home or modular building to be placed on an individual residential lot for non-residential during a project. And it goes on to say that you use a, the planning director or his designee shall have authority to approve the temporary use of a mobile home or modular building placed on an individual, or, lost my spot, the non-resi, when the applicant showed that requests related to the marketing of a development under construction.
The construction trailers.
Right. Then it says, the planning commission may authorize the planning director or his designee to approve a temporary use allowing a mobile home or travel trailer to be placed on an individual lot for residential purposes. The applicant for such authorization first shows, it lists several things that, that he has to show, and it's-
And ownership of that property is one of them.
Right.
So that, that, it makes it a very difficult situation.
So, so just to be clear now, with all of that in mind, your RV is currently not in a mobile state. Is that my understanding?
That's correct, that's correct.
And, and you have nowhere to take it if it were?
That is also correct.
But step one is getting it to the point where we can.
No, I'm just trying to take it all in.
There are services that can move those things, towing companies that can move-
Yes, there are.
Or that don't have wheels.
Should the board be inclined to not approve this or not approve his request tonight? I mean, the county could certainly give him some period of time to work this out. This is not something that we would have to enforce tomorrow. We would absolutely work with him to try to, to give him some, some time there to be able to do that. Whether, whether the board did that or whether y'all just put that back on the staff, we would see to it that he was not put out tomorrow.
You read, read my mind.
That's where I was headed to, give him time to get it fixed and help him find a place to-
Mr. Johnson, it's my understanding that only the property owner could make this application anyway. Is that how we're reading the ordinance?
It's, it's, you know, if it's, he's doing it for the benefit of his land.
Correct.
Not his.
So the application itself is legally invalid?
Have you been cited by code?
I prefer to, yes.
Currently have a violation?
We have those violations, and it's an instance like this where they, they immediately apply. We do not take enforcement action until this board makes its ruling, then take our action based upon what you say.
So the status of yours is, is still pending? It hasn't been brought before to any penalty phase or to the court or anything?
Nor would, nor would we have to forward it to the court. We can, we can hold this in a-
Right.
An administrative state.
That's-
That would be my preference.
Yes, sir.
Take action on what's before us tonight, but give you time to get your situation, last thing you want to do is put you and a family in a bad situation. We want to keep the codes as written, but then we also, I mean, we're, we're humans, we care, you know, we want to make sure you're able to move into a place that will work while you're still here. Any other questions?
Yeah, the code violation from, like, from staff report is simply the 14-day rule. It's not because of the condition of the trailer, the number of people in the trailer, where the trailer's sitting, anything like that, it's just the 14-day rule, is my correct? That's the only code violation that has been listed.
Right, that very too, limits it to 14 days.
Any other questions? Is there a motion in our future?
So if we deny this, what then specifically happens?
I think you could just, if you denied the motion, you could just give the staff direction as to how you'd want us to proceed, and we'll take care of that administratively. I don't think the board-
I wouldn't make that part of the motion.
Yeah, I don't think you'd have to make that part of the motion at all. You just give me the direction that you want us to take, and I'll make sure that it's carried out.
Thank you.
Motion?
It's mine.
Rock and roll.
I would like to make a motion to uphold the decision of the planning commission and deny the request for the temporary use authorization for tax map 017A005.
Second.
Any other discussion?
I think we all have similar mind here, and I believe that, that administration is aware of that also, Mr. Floyd. So although this may be a negative binding in your favor, negative, not in your favor, give us a little time to work with it.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. In order to digress back to-
Got any other camper stuff you'd like to?
Yeah, let's talk about some more campers. We got a lot of campers tonight. Is there anything, let me pull up the agenda, is there anything else on the agenda before we move forward on debate, or do I, can I, can we just go back to revisiting the unfinished business?
My plan was, goes back to the-
And we should return to item 1A1. I, 1A1.
I apologize in advance for my handwriting.
Were you pre-med first?
I was, actually.
I thought you were. I thought, yeah, makes sense. All right, Mr. Price, you don't, you don't need to come up, just pay attention. I would like to make a motion, and I'm glad you wrote this, because I would never have gotten to this. I would like to make a motion to deny the request to S1 zoning, yet grant the applicant variance to build the requested structure with the following conditions. A 30-inch bed of plantings per the applicant's plan submitted on October 20th, 2020, and also removal of all barbed wire from fence line facing Washington Road. Said variance shall not be deemed as waiving any non-conforming conditions existing on the property.
Is there a second?
Can't believe I seconded last time. I second.
Is there any other discussion?
The only thing I would say is, this has been a very difficult, it, it may not seem like much to a lot of folks that are on the outside looking at it, but it obviously means a lot to the applicant, who it's his livelihood, and it's a difficult issue for us, because we've, this has been something in my 12 years on the board, this is my area that I've, I've desperately wanted to see progress on. It is tough to scratch and buy progress here, as the other boards say, and, and I would strongly encourage, strongly encourage the applicant to make any effort to beautify the operation as, as much as possible as the area continues to improve and progresses, and it will. We are already aware of several new developments coming along right in that area. I'm not holding your feet to the fire, but I would, I would just, I, I cannot, as a, more as a citizen, ask that you, as, as thing, time goes on, make every effort, hopefully in your success, to be able to beautify the operation.
Any, any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion carries three to two. Have an executive session now, don't we?
We do, Mr. Chairman.
Go into executive session for me.
That's what we do.
This property matters, so is there a motion to go into executive session?
No move.
Thank you.
All in favor, raise your right hand. We're in executive session. We're in executive session. It's out forever, my friend.
That's right.
Yep, they did.
Okay.
Area Malir.
You want to, Mr. Driver, talk, tell us, tell everybody what we did or didn't do?
We discussed one property matter, and we're going to bring that back up in open session.
Okay, well, there are a few property matters here, and I believe Commissioner Richardson, rock and fire?
Yes, sir. I make a motion to approve $73,800 to Gospel Water Branch, Parcel 3, $82,195 to 1116 Church, Inc., Parcel 116, $21,600 to 1116 Church, Inc., Parcel 118, to obtain temporary and permanent right-of-way and/or easements for the Fears Ferry Widening Project.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Make a motion to approve $1,100 to Vicki Kerr, Parcel 32, $4,4500 to Frank and Leah Murphy, Parcel 34, $193,000 to A R C P M T Grove Town, Georgia, LLC, Parcel 60, to obtain temporary and permanent right-of-way and/or easements for a road widening project.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
I make a motion to approve $149,000 to Herschel J. Pitts, Parcel 14, $17,200 to Jorge Mores, and Carla Castillo, Parcel 15, $33,048 to South State Bank, Parcel 45, to obtain temporary and permanent right-of-way and/or easements for a Rising South Parkway Road widening project.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand.
Make a motion to approve Resolutions 20-41 and 20-42, Declaration of Taking Order of Condemnation for Portion of Tax Map 077002 and 077009F, to obtain permanent easement for the improving widening paving, aligning, and maintaining State Route 28, Fears Ferry.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand.
Make a motion to approve $15,000 to Brenda Gray, Parcel 3, and $500 to Hereford Farm Development, LLC, Parcel 5, to obtain temporary and permanent right-of-way and/or easements for the intersection of Hereford Farm Road and Blanchard Road, turn lanes, and signal.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries. Oh, Malir, sorry.
I make a motion to exercise the right to purchase Tax Map 0731L and 072231X in the amount of $6,500,000, and to authorize the chairman to execute any necessary documents to finalize this purchase.
Second.
Second.
This is, in fact, a motion to purchase the former Tax Layer Building by the county to create a Justice Center Annex where, where, sorry, I'm starting to lose brain power from many discussions, to, for Juvenile Court, for DFAX, or, help me out, Scott, what else would be in there?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, so what we'll be doing is, we'll be creating a Justice Center Annex where the Juvenile Justice Department will have their own building. So our Juvenile Court will have their own courtroom. We'll be able to service families better there. The Department of Family Children Services, which is currently located in Appleling, will be moving to the Evans location. They work very closely with, with the Juvenile Court. And this actually helps our situation. As you know, we've had to put our Justice Center expansion on hold, because it was about $6 million over budget.
Correct.
And this allows us to build what we need to build at the Justice Center to be able to accomplish those goals, and then create a Justice Center Annex to be able to accomplish the goals of meeting the needs of the families in Columbia County.
Right, and the initial cost, in the splot for the courthouse building renovation, we put 13 million, but the bids came back at 19 million. This gives us the ability to renovate the Justice Center, buy this building, and we're going to come out $3 million ahead.
That's correct. When everything's said and done, when we, when we buy the new building, when we build what we need to build at the, at the Justice Center, and we renovate the space in DFAX, we're looking to do that, to give our fire department some additional training facilities. All the funding has been put together, and if we were to just fund those outright, it would cost us significantly more. So yes, you're correct, it's over $3 million savings doing it this way, and it gives us, also gives us room to grow. If we did it the other way, we would be built out day one.
And this gives, this meets the immediate need for Juvenile Court? I mean, how long will it take us to get upfitted, you think?
If we can go ahead and close, and I spoke to the county attorney, if we can go ahead and close on the building, we're prepared to do that as quickly as possible. We have been exploring all the options, and I think that's one thing that we need to point out was, when we, when we did the option on this building, we did this option to just explore all the possibilities that we could use this building for, if we could. And this was the best option. This was the best thing for the citizens of the county. So we've already started looking at how we renovate, when we could renovate, and we would really try to get our Department of Family Children Services moved in there, maybe even by the end of the year. We don't think we'd have the courtroom ready for Juvenile Court by the end of the year, but we might be able to move their offices over there. So it's something that we would move on fairly quickly to try to, to make the best use of the space.
Doing that, that frees up courtroom over for...
That is correct. And speaking with the chief judge and the rest of the Superior Court judges, they're very much in favor of this proposal, because it does, it does give them additional courtroom space in the Justice Center now, and right now, they're competing for that space. It also gives our probate judge and our magistrate judge the ability to have their, I say their own courtrooms, they'll all be shared, but the magistrate judge and the probate judge will have courtrooms that will pretty much be theirs on a regular basis. And ultimately, our Superior Court judges will have the entire second floor of the Justice Center to be able to conduct Superior Court. Also gives the clerker court some additional space, and magistrate court some additional space, district attorney, and also the public defender.
In the purchase price, there was a lot of stuff on the inside that...
Yes, sir, so I think it's important to point out that this, this building was originally marketed for $8 million, and that was for the, for the 32,000-square-foot building on the piece of property that it's on. We were able to negotiate that $8 million down to the $6.5 million. And also, we were able to get included all of the furnishings in the building. The Tax Layer Building being what it was, it has state-of-the-art IT equipment there. So it's already set up for us to be able to, to use that IT equipment, a lot of that staying. All of the furnishings that are in the building are going to stay. They'll all be repurposed, and we'll be able to use all of those furnishings, whether they be in that building or whether they're moved to another county facility. So it keeps us from having to buy those going forward. And we were also able to negotiate, the Tax Layer did have another lot that they used for overflow parking over there that was not marketed in the original $8 million deal. They were looking for an additional $500,000 for that lot. We were able to negotiate that lot as part of this deal. So we're getting the, the building, the lot that it's on, the additional lot, and all the furnishings for $6.5 million.
So at after-hours events, we'll have 120 to 50?
About 120 extra parking spaces over there, because that will all be public parking. So yes, that, that helps with our parking situation when we're talking about events and stuff like that. I mean, obviously, the parking deck's going up. We're looking at an additional parking deck for the Justice Center. But this is going to help, because it's going to alleviate a lot of the situation we have parking now for juvenile. It's going to be moved over on that side.
Any other questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Lot of building.
Mr. Chairman, I motion adjourn.
Second.
You adjourn.